I will call this work session of the Tiger Baldwin School Board to order at 4:32 PM. We have three board members present in person and Director David Himes is present via Zoom. David, can you unmute and just test, make sure we can hear you?
Yes.
Perfect. You are working. Can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Well, with that, I will hand it right on over to Point North Consulting to get started.
First of all, how do you want us to do this? Want to sit at this table?
So yeah, the key is you should, there should be one of these at the table. You don't have to speak into it, but as long as it's green.
Great. And as my colleague Lisa gets settled, first of all, well, thank you, members of the board. For the record, John O'Bell with Dispensal Strategies and we are partnering with Point North on your strategic planning efforts. So thank you for the time this evening. Katie's going to circulate some agendas for you as well as a slide deck. We're going to kick off first with just a fun sort of brainstorming that Lisa will have an opportunity of talking about. So introduce yourself.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you, Lisa Keho Kaloli. Shout out glad to be in person and to see everyone. We wanted to kind of just start a little bit around something fun. So what we're hoping to do is just kind of go around and introduce yourself. So the cabinets here, which is very exciting, we haven't met all of the members of the cabinet. We've had the opportunity to spend time with the board directors, but we hope, we were hoping that we could just ask you to introduce yourself and your role and then maybe share with us, if you could go on vacation anywhere, where would you want? Just kind of get us kicked off. So anyone want to?
Which is a perfect day considering the weather.
We'll just go down this if that works. Ben Bowman, school board chair. If I could go anywhere, I think I'd, I think I'm going to go Italy. I've never been to Europe and I've always really wanted. I love the history of Italy and also the multi-coast and all that. That sounds pretty good.
Well, exactly. Maybe going together. My side is to get cooked to a Tuscan and spending several weeks doing that and coming back with better knowledge about how to make fresh pasta.
And board member Jill George, my dream vacation would be to go to New Zealand, kayak, go hiking, drop around the country.
Our director on Zoom.
And I'm David Himes and gosh, if I could go anywhere, I've always wanted to go to like Fiji or Tahiti, somewhere out there. Think that would be great.
So thank you.
I'm Susan Benar, I'm Chief Director of Strategic Services. Somewhere more, less rain, relax, wherever that might be, but has cheap places.
I'm Director Jennifer, I think the population's too long. I was saying I was going anywhere my wife goes. Vacation number one, awesome. Yeah, anywhere with water.
I'm Joe Kitchen, the Director of Services and yes, tomorrow I'd like to eat fried fries.
I know I'm Debbie Hebert, I'm Director of HR for the district script and I have recently been researching this.
I'd go to New Orleans.
And Dumble, I'm sure.
Hello, I am Mr. Paul.
Hi, I'm Emma Phil, Director of Secretary, Director of College. And I would go Italy on a sort of.
Hi, I'm Delia, I'm the Director of Department of Education and I would go to Bolivia. I, this is.
Thank you. I feel like my back is, we'll try and like make sure that we're moving around the room a little bit. Appreciate everybody spending a little time and sharing where they might want to go, especially on, to your point, this raining. Rainy when we did. So our plan for today is really to spend some time doing a bit of a baseline. So you know where we're headed based on where we've been. And a lot of that work is going to be done by the cabinet. And then we'll spend some time really diving into the strategic imperatives and then into a SWOT analysis. Now, what we're trying to do is really keep in mind, what can we leverage that's already been done? So as you're listening to the presentation from the cabinet, what is the good work we want to transfer over? And then what is potentially some gaps or areas where we want to spend some more time to focus? So we're not starting from scratch. There's been so much good work that's been done and work that's been identified to continue to be done. So that's kind of the frame of reference for today. We do like to, whenever John L. and I are working together, really center our time together around some operating norms. And you may have some that you use. We just thought we would share a little bit in terms of what we typically use and how we try to ensure that there's balance within the room. Those that tend to lean in and speak more, perhaps lean back a little bit. And those that lean back, we want to encourage you to maybe lean forward a little bit more. So I know Katie sent just kind of those overall meeting agreement slides. I'm not sure, how do you, can you bring those up?
Like it might be up right there.
I think there was another one too. Unless you drop those in between. Yeah. That's okay. They were, we just sent them over. So we can kind of run through them as you are pulling them up and you might have access to them via your email. But what we wanted to do is kind of talk through what they each mean. So do you want to kind of get us started on them?
Yeah. So the first one, I would start off with relationship is important for us. You know, we like to start off with a fun question like that because we learned so much about one another just in terms of, you know, as we kind of roll up our sleeves on some of this difficult work, it's important for us to normalize our relationships. So the first is for us to really work to put relationships first, which is to want to build community and trust with an awareness of power dynamics. For us to be aware of the power dynamics in the room, I think is important. And for us to listen to understand, not reply, and for us to be inclusive, really trying to create an inclusive environment today as we kind of tackle some of your strategic planning work.
So the next one is really around staying focused on our common goals. So in terms of what we're trying to achieve overall is launching a new strategic plan. But what we're trying to achieve today is really the review of your existing strategic plan and then our ability to really kind of dig into the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that the district is seeing right now as we look at not only affirming our strategic imperatives, but also going through and starting to build that plan. And so when we talk about keeping focused on our common goal, it's also important that we recognize and we name that there are other impacts like racism that we need to stay attentive to, that centering equity in our work really includes emphasizing our process to create equitable outcomes. And we do this by engaging and elevating voices of historically marginalized or underrepresented communities. And that has been a huge part of how we've looked at engaging the community and working with Tracy and Zinnia to put together a community engagement plan that is inclusive and really does reflect and honor the values of the Tiger 12th District.
The next, as we continue to build upon the work, and we heard this in all of the board interviews. So just really thrilled to be working with such an organization that is really leaning in, leaning in on equity and equity concepts. It's for us to notice the power dynamics in the room, for us to be aware of how you use your privilege, for taking up too much emotional and airtime space or disengaging. For us to lean in at times where we might have some discomfort, but for us to really lean into that discomfort such that we can come up with the right path forward. If you're virtual, I guess we have one, one board member here virtual, we ask if you can keep your video on. And if your question or comments has already been made, we ask to not necessarily repeat it. We have a limited time today. But I, we recognize that sometimes it's important to accentuate a point. So we want to leave room for that as well. And to just be present and engaged. It's so great to be doing this in person for the most part. So for us to just be present and engaged.
Another norm that we like to pay attention to is just creating a space for multiple truths. So we want each person who's participating today to all really feel empowered to share your truth, to seek understanding of truths that differ from yours with an awareness of power dynamics. So we think that this is really important. And again, it's about listening to understand and listening to different perspectives.
Another is to be kind and brave. Again, for us to remember relationships first, for us to work to be explicit with our language about race, class, gender, immigration, for us to really call those terms out and to call out some of the inequities that may exist, to not again, be afraid of that. Because that's how we're going to be able to work with you to craft a strategic plan that really helps to advance more equity. And the core of that is to be clear in our language, for us to be curious. There are no wrong questions in this room and for us to ask questions before I make the assumptions. And incidentally, if folks, just to know, we borrow this from Equity Matters, which is a great organization that really helps to frame up really important processes with an equity lens. And so that's where a lot of these come from.
And then we put our spin on it. The next one is practice examining racially biased systems and processes. Really looking at individual actions and systems and really kind of questioning, focusing on the process and the outcome. It's all of our job to do that. We were at a presentation not that long ago where you were looking at an equity audit. You know, those sorts of things are so critically important in terms of really examining systems and processes. And so we're not just interested in helping to facilitate the end result, which is a strategic plan. We're interested in that process that feels inclusive and centering equity on our way towards that output.
The next is for us to look for learning. Show what you're learning, not what you already know. For us to avoid playing devil's advocate, the devil has enough advocates. Adopt a growth mindset and seek data to inform decision making. And that's going to be particularly important as we look at strengths and opportunities. What, what additional data might we need in order to advance the strategies that you need?
We think that data is really important and that the word inform is about the role that each of you play to take that data, make critical decisions on that data, but that data is just informing good decisions. Not that it's set aside and by itself. The last slide that we have is just really asking for feedback if there's something that's missing. So in the agreements that we set forth, that we really try to pay attention to in our facilitation, is there anything that you saw that you thought was missing or that we should maybe address? And that's an open conversation. So you're just seeing these for the first time. You're just hearing us kind of talk about them. When we meet again for our next workshop, if there is something that's come up that you feel like, hey, this was missing and we really want to integrate it, completely open to that feedback. I'd love to hear from you. So that's really kind of the commitment that we bring to this in terms of the way in which we're facilitating our space together. And if there's not any other comments, then I think this might be the right time for us to kind of step aside and allow the cabinet to be able to present the strategic planning information they have ready to go.
Thank you so much. And if I could please, by Director and Director Fields, do you know if our student reps will be joining this evening?
Henry said he's unlikely to make it to the work session, but will try to be here for the meeting and I have not heard from him.
All right. Would it, would it be?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So please feel free to take the two student rep seats.
That way you'll have, if you're sitting there, you'd have microphone.
I'm thinking maybe Director Moore and Director Rose would like to come to the center and then the rest of us can kind of work from our, from our area related to our slides. Or there. Yeah. I don't, I don't know if there's, is there a mic, a live mic there? No. Okay. So it's going to need to be there.
We've got.
I can also chat. Okay. All right. Thank you. There you go. All right, just more.
Good evening, members of the board. This evening Cabinet is prepared to share some of the accomplishments over the last five years of the current strategic plan, in addition to describing under each of the strategies within each of the four cornerstones, what is currently relevant and what is relevant going forward in the minds of Cabinet. Okay, we're all familiar with the four cornerstone of the current strategic plan. So like I said, we'll, Cabinet members will address some of the work over the last five years in each of the four cornerstone. And two years ago Cabinet developed an additional extension of the current strategic plan with the district priorities. I think most of you have seen the image that's on the screen before. And I don't know if, Dr. Ricky Smith, if you want to mention any specifics in regard to this?
Thank you. The highlight here for those who are not part of the original House Strategic Department and Director Bowman, we did a research room over two years ago in our preparation for Student Success Act. And as part of our ongoing work with the district management group relative to Smarter School Spending, one of the things that they noted in our strategic plan was that we were missing a theory of action. Why we, why this, this strategic plan, what's driving this strategic plan? And so the cabinet labored well into a week during a retreat that summer and crafted the theory of action that you see in front of you on this slide underneath in blue that drives everything else that we do. And so this was a, an anchoring for us as we moved into SSA and giving clarity to the purpose of the strategic plan. I want you to think of this as where we were, where we are and where we have been. Because at the end of this presentation, we will show you a revised model as to how we are thinking about our work as of today. That should be able to point us towards the future conversations around the strategic plan. But wanted you to be aware of our theory of action relative to focusing on equity of academic outcomes, which is now codified relative to board policy ACC, equity, education and racial justice.
At the same time, we were implementing the current strategic plan, we implemented a program called Smarter School Spending. And that reminded us that we should align our spending with the goals that are in the strategic plan. And we've been practicing this over, over the course of the work of the current strategic plan. And primarily what we're doing is paying attention to the data, both in the form of student outcomes plus the costs that were incurred in strategies that were put in place to achieve those student outcomes. And then we've been practicing a concept called Academic Return on Investment or AROII. And in my mind, this is more or just as much a mindset versus a calculation or computation. And we like to say, you know, are we getting the best bang for our buck, for the dollars we're putting into our programs? And then finally, these are all principles that lead to program evaluation. Over the last couple of years, we've been evaluating programs and listing out our programs in the form of a program inventory and doing this work as far as measuring outcomes compared to the dollars that have been put into the programs. So with that, I think we're ready to jump into the remainder of the directors going over the accomplishments and what is still relevant in each of the four cornerstone within the individual strategies. And I believe first up, we have Director Robson.
Yes. Thank you very much. In the interest of connecting to the strategic plan, the 16 through 21 strategic plan, where we have the cornerstone and then under student achievement, six strategies that were listed. You'll notice the next few slides are set up in such a way where we've tried, we've tried to answer and capture at a high level the, what we've accomplished and what is still relevant connected to those strategies. So the first one, you can see strategy 1.1 is framework, really instructional framework development and professional development is part of that. And then what I have done is, I'm not sure it got updated in this, but under instructional framework, there is a link. So I put some links in there for further review later on. But the instructional framework that really is housed within our teacher evaluation rubric, which has five different domains that are really specific to what we want to see happening in the classroom with our teachers. And what we've been able to do in terms of accomplishment is really work throughout the years to align our administrators around those standards and focus on calibrating that among our administrators in terms of what they're looking for in classrooms. And then we have really responded over time in terms of professional development based on shifting learning environments. And the PD framework that's there, and again, for a highlight later, but the PD framework is really kind of a, a way to look at how we deliver PD in general as a jumping off point for our trainers or TOSSs or instructional coaches, that kind of thing that really allowed us to make a connection with that, that, those processes. And then effectiveness data, really important for us to, one of the things that we've done again as a link, just as an example, is a, an expectation that we understand what the effectiveness of each of our PDs are and, and provide that to all of our audiences who go through training with the intent to, you know, show a 90% plus highly effective to effective, you know, feedback ultimately is what our goal is. What is still relevant is the instructional framework development to refine standards. That's something that Len Reed is working with the committee to now jump into and start to look at building out that framework as our current framework is, has some years connected to it. And so that work is underway. And then a shift to develop professional development model to allow for daily, weekly, consistent instructional support through instructional coaches and really looking at building out and scaling up that resource across our district and our buildings to be able to impact professional development on a daily basis. And then collecting evidence, effective evidence is something that we will continue to do to hold ourselves accountable, to be able to reflect on our practices and move from there. Next slide, please. So just quickly in terms of interim assessments, I added this in terms of a strategy that really is wrapped around understanding where our kids are and owning our data to be sure we're making decisions that are relevant to our students and our teachers. And we have included, we've introduced an interim assessment, fall, winter and spring into K8 classrooms via iReady. And I've added some links there, just some snapshots of some data that are really telling in terms of how impactful that has been even to date, to this date. And then we've introduced personalized instruction using iReady My Cap resources as well, which also has some very specific data connected to it at this point. And then training teachers and administrators around the use of this tool, these tools is something that's unfolded in terms of K5 and 680 across our district. And then what's still relevant is we'll continue PD development and really look at site based. Our next phase is really bringing in trainers to be working with site specific teams based on what the data is telling us out of the diagnostics to really get, you know, to really focus on what their needs are in their individual buildings. And then looking at student growth, typical and stretch growth data and conferencing with students, looking at how to really use the reports to inform practice. And not only that, but to inform students and parents and then core instructional implications alongside personalized learning. So using those resources in a differentiated way. Next slide, please. So that's 1.1. I'm going to hand it over to Director Bernard for 1.2.
Thank you very much. Also under student achievements, we have the instructional technology integration. And as you recall or can reference, we've got implementation data. We had some classroom data and then we had outcomes. So I'm going to speak specific to the outcomes underneath that particular strategy. It was our goal to have 100% of our students to have devices and we were able to meet that goal. It was our goal to have 100% of teachers have successfully used one tool or strategy in their classroom as a result of technology PD. We, thanks to, I guess, the opportunity of COVID and distance learning, we had many opportunities last year for all of our teachers to participate and to use different strategies for distance learning using technology devices that they had not always been using across the classrooms. And then similarly, 100% of our students, our goal was 80%, were provided the opportunity to demonstrate proficiency on various ISTI standards, which are technology standards. Due again to the remote learning that they were provided the opportunity for and because of the shift in learning and opportunities for students to kind of demonstrate their learning in a variety of different modalities than they had in the classroom. So in some ways that was more equitable for our students across the district versus just kind of the pockets that we had. And hopefully we'll continue to do that. So along the lines of what is still relevant, we want to maintain our one-to-one so we can provide that opportunity for students, which has a price tag associated with it, both for devices and for support. both for devices and for support for our classroom teachers and supports. Maintain or increase the supportive technology integration instructional strategies. And then also would want to be relevant to continue with this and ensure all teachers embed global perspectives and equitable practices through technology use. So those are the ISTI standards that we want to make sure are relevant to our world and the world that we are moving kids into. Next slide, please.
Okay, and one of the strategies, 1.3, was wrapped around growth mindset. And what we've accomplished is we actually, and I linked it in here as well for later preview, but developed the long-term objectives or wrapped around growth mindset, how that might unfold in the district over the course of time. And so that's highlighted here. And the follow-up to that was that we had some initial growth mindset trainings with our administrators in August 2017 as a starting point and did some continued reflection and work around that, moving down that timeline. But in all transparency, that did not, it stalled out a bit in terms of the focus around growth mindset. It's picked back up. It's still relevant. What's relevant is the inclusion of mindset and collective efficacy, if you will, as a focus as part of what we, how we do our work across our system. That has been regenerated and work that we've started again this last, going into this school year with our administrators around collective efficacy as we look to really understand our data and our efforts and how that really is impacting students and really bring that to our teachers as well. And that is also a piece, that is assessment literacy, not only for staff but administrators, really owning our data, celebrating those successes, again, wrapped around collective efficacy and supporting each other through the focus of practice, the practice that's occurring in classrooms. And then instructional leadership teams are something that is an expectation and work that's happening in each of our schools to align around a really specific team, instructional leadership team, to assist with this idea of understanding what's unfolding in our buildings around professional development, how it's impacting students. Next slide, please. Okay, Director Fields.
We can't, David, can you hear Director Fields?
Great. Okay, so for 1.4, work for five, so there's current policy we've accomplished, just the way it's been teaching. We've got mentorship, most of our year planning, across all of the people and careers. Our current college centers and advisors are in the first session of passion track for ready. That process is a little high. We're navigating for exploration experience, wheel CT force expansion, and a flow of goals to the CT before force and equipment expansion. And then specific tasks again, transitions, power hybrid success, variety preparing to meet squad and some of that well. And we've also wanted to build this success. As far as what's still relevant, focusing more on career leadership, we've seen a lot of those in our PD career. We've seen a lot of dedicated internships and tour of our type for ready experiences. Expanding our goals to focus on career and college businesses, not to be competitive, but to be competitive. And just rethinking or retooling how we operate, so to speak, and that was supposed to be our practice. The mission to practice is about coming from a, um, um, and our positive role in helping people. And then lastly, our academic leadership is to continue to expand this to be successful, but not successfully.
I guess I would add, Director Fields, that Strategy 1.6 then was mental and emotional health. And that's actually going to be something that Director Kinch will speak to a little bit more in the presentation. No, no, sorry, Zinnia, you're, Director, you are up.
All right. So our focus under community around strategy, some of the last family, they're in the circle of death for us. We're in the process of being less aware to identify, try to do this for a piece of. Some of the achievements that we've seen in the last five years that were the intensive, necessary process or best way of achieving process, the development of the educational framework process and where you take over to unpack this portion of them from the lens of the experience. Now, we've fitted a convention series, a partnership, a community self centers, to build out a community needs infrastructure, community partnerships with state county management and very direct service as a family and equity leadership team and family. What's still relevant is the district expectations and norms and being able to have a voice and be that. As of the interviews, both through today's, we could inform the session, the space session, the performance. Participating or incident making our policy and practice intentional, and therefore, as a whole, of the classic expression that's relevant and specific to what we said, as well as the. Grad, gratitude to this process, equity of care, of course, also highlight initiatives. This is where we, they can worry, or equity initiatives, to determine effectiveness and identify that. We were able to create a framework for all of the models in the network, who are between pillars. Leadership, staff, community, building a basic need infrastructure that you have for our fieldwork and out of this, after childhood, access through connected family. And equity initiatives that are seen, known, and felt across our district in partnership with students, families, staff, and community. Also creating dynamic learning communities that realize that individuality, creativity, and thinking outside of the box with these. What's still relevant is the role of course for student making, as well as necessary follows. The basic need team of magical actions or maybe basis or effort of home. Premiers, the partnership of staff, which is, and members as part of our decision-making practice. And also the equity infrastructure that includes building a three-formator for all schools, creating your team now schools. Then first advocates, social, sense coordinator, and our great needs infrastructure, which is a multiple way comes, which is possible. All of that's around.
All right, talent. We had four strategies under the talent pillar. Under hiring practices, what we have accomplished so far, we instigated an implicit bias training for all of our administrators and teachers who are part of an interview team. We also developed a hiring handbook, handbook that we trained all of our administrators and managers on, bringing into compliance just some of the different strategies that we had been using around hiring and streamlining that to be more consistent across all of our schools. We're also partnering with the Northwest Regional ESD and the DEP program, which is one of our grow our own programs for our students. And that's where we're investing dollars into students at our high schools who are interested in becoming teachers. We're sponsoring them in a couple of different ways. We've also invested S R dollars into the recruitment of our own classified staff of color and put dollars into investing in them and mentoring them. And we also have improved recruitment and retention practices throughout our HR department. And what still remains relevant is that we are still working to diversify our workforce and keep the new teachers that we do hire. In the second strategy, under professional development and evaluation, accomplishments thus far have been reviewing our evaluation systems and supports for our licensed group. The majority of our administrators have had a high degree of understanding on how to use the evaluation tool, and they accomplish the task within the timeline, which has been a huge improvement over time. Not everyone is calibrated with the standards, but we have spent considerable more PD time with our administrators working on this, and we've seen much improvement. We also have a new leaders academy that's up and running for our new leaders. What remains relevant is the need for alignment between what is being evaluated and the supports and opportunities for growth with our teaching staff. We've started to have more conversation with, where Dr. Director Robson mentioned that Len Reed, our Associate HR Director, has been working on. So connecting and aligning our professional development directly to our, to our standards for our teachers. Under mentoring and staff retention, accomplishments have been challenging in this, in the pandemic. But one of the bright spots we wanted to mention tonight have been at the high school level because we've shifted to a different model of mentorship, which has included using our instructional coaches to work with our P one, P twos, and P threes, those are probationary teachers, using a monthly meeting format, and we've gotten really good feedback on that from our, from our teachers at the high school level. Mentoring, getting people to want to mentor in the pandemic has just been a real challenge. So what remains relevant is that we are very aware that our new teachers of color need more mentorship with staff of color. So we are partnering with Northwest Regional again to increase the mentors of color who can partner with us. And retaining our probationary teachers can still be a challenge for us. We've also invested in upbeat, which is a staff survey that the board has heard about. And we've made that investment, and we're going to start those staff surveys this spring. And we also use our current exit survey data. I didn't get all of my notes on here. Thank you. To increase our data around why our staff are leaving. And one of our other relevancies is that we just don't have enough experienced teachers that are stepping up to mentor our new teachers, and that's causing us to relook at how we're mentoring. I think I'm good. I think that's it. Just cut me off a little bit. Yep, okay.
Good evening, Carol Kinch, Director of Student Services. I'm going to begin the section on climate and culture. As you can see, there's three, four areas that we will share. Dr. McCall will talk about preschool, and Director Rose will talk about communication. Next slide, please. So we have combined the mental health strategy that you would have seen in Section One and Climate Culture Round PBIS. And I would say we have, our achievements have been that we continue to have a strong PBIS system or systems in our district. We've gone well beyond the year twenty sixteen, seventeen and have continuous improvement plans. Every year, our teams look at their data and make, use something called tiers of fidelity inventory. I would say that systems are still critically important. They provide a roadmap for us and create predictable environments where we all know what to expect. It also allows us to plan for all students, knowing that many students are going to be okay with our core program, but we will always have some students who will need a little more and some students who will need a lot more. So it allows us to be proactive in that. That alone, though, does not meet the goal of creating nurturing, represented, and safe environments. It may provide some predictable environments, but to really have the communities that we're striving for, you need to go a lot deeper than a PBIS system. So we, you will see that we have shifted in our tier, focus on tier one, embedding SCL. And when I talk about SCL tonight, I'm not talking about a canned program. I'm talking about restorative practices, trauma-informed practices, just keeping in mind the relationships, humanizing environments for both staff and students in our schools and in our classrooms. So I think it's important to see a shift in our focus on equity. A little awkward for me to have this conversation without connecting it to the work that Director, I'm just described. So I put some of those things on there, but obviously, it's not exhaustive. We also have added SCL coaches and some of our restorative practices and trauma-informed coordinators. So we've invested some resource in that. We are far from done. And so it is still relevant to me to focus on that because we know that when you create safe, welcoming, nurturing environments, students learn more and they are able to learn more, even if they are experiencing some trauma or a heart event from the morning. If we can create those environments, they can come into school ready to learn. And then on the mental health side, I'm glad they're together because we all have mental health. We all have days where it's positive and days that we struggle. And so I think when sometimes we talk about mental health, we're thinking about therapists, and they're really important for some people and some times in our life. But what we have learned is that, and our students have said to us loud and clear, is mental health is this for all of us all the time, and we would like to be able to talk about it. And so what I think is relevant around mental health is first having a coordinated program. And we did have a program inventory. We hired Kathy Wilson Day. She's improved that coordination already in her short time here, but we need to continue to think about the full continuum and how we are providing students, particularly our secondary students, opportunities to learn about mental health, learn about strategies for self-regulation and stress management, and create spaces for them to be able to talk about it. And then finally, I think it's important, we've gotten a bit better at including families and student voice in all of our climate and culture programs, but we need to do better. So having active partnerships with our students and families in both those, both those topics, those areas, is critically important. Next slide.
Dr. Lisa McCall. And for Strategy 4.3, as it pertains to preschool, what we have accomplished thus far is creating early learning, mission, vision, and also practices that deliver universal access to high-quality and inclusive early learning services for our entire community with a priority on our families who our system, our educational system has not fully served yet. So we currently have five district preschools this year. And what we've also accomplished is we've completed an early learning community needs and resource assessment. And right now, that's been specific to two of our programs. We've also have accomplished a no wrong door access to our communities' public and free early learning programs. That's also including Head Start by utilizing a shared pre-K program interest form. So regardless if our families are placed to go to Head Start or TPSD, one form that they have to fill out. And that's great. So what is still relevant and ongoing is expanding our program to full capacity because we are a pre-K to twelve district, and so that expansion is ongoing. And what's also ongoing and relevant is making full and consistent use of our pre-K curriculum, which is new for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And that prioritizes SCL, social emotional learning, early literacy, early math and science within a developmentally appropriate and rich classroom environment that is, focuses on being publicly responsive to all of us students that we serve. And then lastly, we want to coordinate our kindergarten transition system so that all of our programs, we know what to expect when students are transitioning from a pre-K to our kindergarten classroom.
Director Rose.
Tracy Rose, Director of Communications, Community Relations. What we have accomplished is we are dedicated to continuing to focus on one hundred percent notification. That means across all of our staff, families, community, that we're able to reach all of our families in case of an emergency. We're able to inform and engage our entire stakeholder list at a moment's notice. So what we have put in place is our community newsletter, our staff newsletters. We've created opportunities for Dr. Sue to communicate to families and staff as well as her tours of Sit with Sue to get out and meet in person. as well as her tours of Sit With Sue to get out and meet in person. We are continuing to work very closely hand in hand with our Equity and Inclusion Team led by Director Un to really get intentional into our individual buildings so that we can read the data, study the data of how we're communicating, how many families we're reaching, who we're not reaching. So we can make sure that we're getting our information and informing all of our families, all of our students. We are currently working on enhancing our website and our employee portal again to be able to increase internal, enhance internal and external communications. What is still relevant is continuing to focus on that 100%. There are, continue to be families that we aren't, we aren't connecting with on a regular basis. We're doing that as we work again with Director Un's team on culturally responsive communications, making sure that our translation services are efficient and that all of our families are getting the information they need to be able to serve our students. District advisory opportunities with our students to give feedback relative to how we're communicating. Does it meet their needs? Are we, are we communicating to our staff efficiently? These are the areas that we're going to continue to focus on. And then our community engagement as well. Small listening sessions, as we are planning to do relative to this process that we're starting now, we will continue as a practice and then we'll be guided by our metrics. So we will be able to not only see how many people are opening emails, but we'll also be able to survey, look at the data of how many people our social media platforms are, are reaching, what's most efficient and being able to pivot and change as we see where people are engaging best. Professional communications, we are looking to engage further on platforms such as LinkedIn to highlight our staff that are doing really amazing innovative work so that we can bring more attention to the all-stars that we have working for our district. And then continue to storytell and polling to make sure that people are paying attention, people are engaged, people are, are getting the information that we're hoping to get to them. From a community relations standpoint, you've heard quite a bit of it from Director Un. We have worked together, starting about three years ago, I believe, with the community budget process, which led into the SSA work, the SIA work, the, the community engagement that we did virtually during COVID, including all of the meetings during the summer as we led into our first full year of CDL, the SRO process that Director Un led. And now as we head into the ESH Committee and the work that we're doing there, convening students, families, parents, community and staff. Community and civic engagement, we will continue to do this work and hopefully live here soon. Meeting with Rotary Chamber, faith-based leaders, staff celebrations, bond celebrations. These are the ways that we have convened and are currently convening. And then moving forward, just to enhance the processes that we already have, make sure that we are engaging stakeholders that are typically raising their hands and coming to the table. And then we have the work ahead of us to wrap up the current bond and then engage our community as we head into looking at what the future is for our buildings and facilities as well as the next levy.
And so this is where I leave you this evening and then move on to any questions. But remember where we started relative to our period of action, much more linear chart. We offered this as a, a launch point, if you will, for your consideration relative to doing the DGO work relative to, to the strategic plan. We have already started as we presented to you relative to the district goals of 5 and 8% growth, a culturally and community responsive educational framework that is focused, focused first on humanizing the conditions within the school environment as well as aligning the component practices that include assessment literacy and understanding both the quantitative as well as qualitative data that our students and staff produce and how that will get us to those goals relative to closing, ultimately closing the equity achievement gap. So with that, I believe we will go forward to any questions and then turn it back to our partners.
Any questions? There's a lot of information.
I guess my question is after going through, are there any parts of the recent strategic plan that candidates sees that really just don't want?
Yeah, there are moments that we feel either we've, we've done well enough that we don't need people in our next department or one of those circumstances changed from under the level of thought. So keeping in with the program inventory of what people started adding more staff or students than what schools.
I would say maybe that is getting the assessment, how many, you know, making sure that care is up.
I was just saying, the work that we consistently reflect back on is just making sure that our, our assessments of our measurements of the strategies that are listed are hitting the mark to be able to help us understand impact through and through. And then with our smarter school spending processes also, we then will get cost alongside that and start to make those determiners as to what, what's working and what's not. So but ultimately the measurements, making sure that those are hitting the market.
The long line, we can measure it, tell us something meaningful related to kind of our college that the public highlights. It's a bit around, we, we're not getting more, it's not, that's multiple, yeah. But what are the, the parts of the story that actually informs how it influences different people? Within the, our equity filler, one of the things, like, maybe the, the, the more, I think, for the family. Let me know a lot more now around what family, maybe look at, go over the work and just want data around, I mean, the number, you know. Even within a basic H team, school where are you teaching the camp at school? So I think, you know, there'll be a thing that I might want to see more of, of, of it and systems there.
And I would highlight that, that I think that we measured more than anything else in the former strategic plan or the tools that you had, that you had already at that point. I think we have progressed, the works progressed to a point where, you heard me say it was clearly needed again tonight. The formative and interim data is far more important relative to achieving the outcomes and goals than summative data. Simply because you can do something about formative and interim as it's being produced, where summative is nothing more than, than an autopsy at that point and you then have an opportunity to do better and going into, or differently going into the next year. But we want to know in real time what the needs are and how they can make this truly a living, breathing document that is responsive to what is in front of us. And I think particularly given the two years of the pandemic has demonstrated the need for that facility and flexibility in terms of responsibilities.
So one of my questions was somewhat related to that in terms of areas where sort of we have now the breadth, but where do we go deeper? So as, and not necessarily to answer that question now, but as we go through the strategic planning process, one of my questions would be exactly that. Where are the areas that now we have that data? So where can we look for the context and really just sort of the stories around that data? And my other question, which you get, doesn't have to be answered now, but I'm curious if there were any parts of the former plan that we just didn't get to, not that they fail per se, but just there was a lot going on and then we had, you know, pandemics happen and whatnot. So just if there were areas that was like, and you just didn't get to yet, what some of those might be that we could pay a look at it and add up?
Yeah, just to comment on that, the mindset, the growth mindset piece was one that with Dweck's work and, and that was really at the forefront of, of the thinking, I think, going into mindset and how that could impact students on one front and then staff on the other and what that might look like. And I, that just, as I said, it, the plan was kind of laid out, got started and probably an area where we, you know, did not get to the work through and through, but is firing back up through our collective efficacy work in that sense now. So. And it comes up in the SCL work as well, exactly. So it's, it's not dead by any means. It's important and it's, it's, it's making, you know, come back.
Two things that I would note around post-education undergraduism, for current college, that it more heavily are valued in the career and college outcomes as opposed to that college only. I think I noted earlier, but it's just how the conversation, how you can use that or rest that there, that success model is huge now. And then the academic transitions, I would think that ninth grade, fifth grade, we're doing some studying right now around more of the method that school is, is getting actually ready. And so we're going to be working, we need our, our study, but they're going to be part of our multiple study work. I think we could shift what that, I don't think rate of the best indicators is great for middle school. We could shift to some more, some combination of the two.
I'm glad to hear you say the, the career at college, ready. Because I remember that statistic kind of bugged me when we did it the first time. And when I was reviewing all the factors, I was thinking that was one of the reasons I don't need to play. I don't want to measure success on how many kids are going to be published. That's not the way.
Our strategies are just aligned with our strategy for, 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 as I said, for secondary, there's to be either oral or written. So we're all going away from this, that, or, or, right there, which, yeah, I don't know.
I want to make sure that Director Hames has the opportunity to jump in, give anything.
No, everything sounded great. Thank you.
Well, so first logistical question for Patty. This is a working dinner work session, right? So we should probably, people should start getting food while we're transitioning. Maybe, can we take a two or three minute break? Does that work? Okay. We'll take a short recess and go back in about three minutes.
Hi, Mrs.
Okay, I'm going to reconvene the meeting at 5:40 PM. Director Hamis, he's coming back on and we'll hand it over to you.
Excellent. We had wanted to in our agenda spend a little time speaking to the strategic imperatives, which in your language are the cornerstones of your strategic plan. And we just spent quite a bit of time kind of understanding what has been done and what is still relevant. And we're looking at how we pull that over into the new plan. I think Director Irvin, your comment about what maybe hasn't been worked on, we could spend a little bit more time there. I don't know if we want to do that in that, in this meeting, but I think that's relevant for us to kind of look at in terms of what certainly kind of pulls through that thread. But we're curious around the four cornerstones because we really believe that that forms the basis for this strategic plan moving forward. Those four cornerstones are student achievement, culture and climate, talent and equity. Are those four moving over into your new plan? Are we open to changing those? We're looking for some feedback around that particular piece before we walk into any sort of discussion around strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats.
I think one thing that I could offer on behalf, on behalf of Dr. Lynn and I is that we did want to keep something cohesive that we could see grow over longer periods of time and enter deals to that with certain aspects of the plan, like the pillars. So from the conversations we've had, it's been a while since we talked about this specifically. But I do think you brought this to the board at one of the meetings because that would be something that I think could be helpful to keep. At least in some way, shape or form, those four pillars so that while we are keeping adding, taking away things, we can still look back at the last plan and see where we've come and be able to in another five years kind of have a side by side.
Director Irvin, if I may pose a question, when, when you indicate that the pillars you would perhaps advance, did you all have any conversation relative to just sort of overarching headings or the commentary within the boxes as well?
I think it was mainly those headings because one thing that came up as well was, for example, actually while it's own thing, that was something where we also wanted to make sure that it was in every pillar. So it was understandable. The headings and the subheadings under these four pillars can absolutely
I agree with everything Director Irvin said. I'm open to changing them. However, also like if there's an additional concept or reframing of concept that comes up in this process, I'm not like, you know, super like connected to keeping them, but I do think that they have done a pretty good job of indicating our priorities and focusing focus.
They've worked well for us. I don't want to change it for change's sake because it's telling reasons to add something, drop something. I feel very negative. Director Hamis, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm also opening, I mean, open to keeping them, but also open to other outcomes. So, you know, I'm not married to the pillars, even though that's what I know about PTSD, but we can definitely change them.
Good. We didn't want to make any assumptions. So that is something that we're going to continue to want to question as we move forward and then just find ways to reaffirm as opposed to kind of open up. So that's helpful. The assignment that we had sent prior to our time together was around that SWOT analysis. And so having the baseline presentation from Cabinet in terms of where the district's been with the strategic plan over the last six, five, six years and where we are today hopefully helped to set a bit of that baseline for how we would move forward with the SWOT analysis. So strengths and weaknesses tend to be very internally focused, challenge and opportunities externally focused. We hope maybe you had a little bit of time to do some thinking around the SWOT analysis. We'd love to kind of do some some posters around this. If you have some feedback around from your perspective, where are some strengths and weaknesses more internally focused with the district? We could start there and I can kind of just write on the board. If anybody has anything they want to jump in and share.
So I think that we do spread and inclusion well.
Can you say it again a little louder?
We do spread and inclusion quite well. I think we're very good at educating college round white kids. I think we pay huge influence in our affinity groups. Kudos to those. I'm immensely proud of what we've done with technology. The fact that when we entered into the pandemic, we already had devices that any kids can make life so much easier. And so I think we'll have ourselves a little back for that. I think our facilities are in phenomenal shape compared to other districts our size. And I think that's in no small part because we have really good community support for our bond and for our little watch, which is another strength.
Can I clarify? Are we, we're talking about district wide strengths or are we talking about the existing strategic plans?
District wide, yes. Thank you for the clarification. Some of these also could be even opportunities here. Like this piece here, community support for bonds because of the extra, but no, thank you for making this sound.
Sorry, I think the equity work that we're doing is also there, one of our strengths. And using student voice to guide the work.
I definitely agree with the student voice. I think we've been very successful with that. I also think community support from community leaders, partners, is it definitely is included in our bond work, but it's bigger than that too. It's, you know, collective decision-making around COVID pandemic related restrictions. It's support from our schools foundation, which raises tons of money. It's in the middle of a big fund drive for, fund drive for us right now. Partnerships with our cities, with the facilities work that we're doing. I think we've done, we've been very successful with that. I also feel like we have to mention that we just hit our highest graduation rates in district history. So academically speaking, there are some places where we're excelling right now despite the challenging circumstances.
Congratulations.
Are there strengths that maybe haven't been mentioned? I have our school, our RAN, building out. And I think our growing commitment and understanding of SCL mental health to form stars students is true. So it's good to start a strength.
And I would also all be relative to that, just in general. This, this is the third district and I have the privilege of working with it for. This district is absolutely fearless when it comes to having hard conversations, working through hard community issues. And not stopping that work until we get to the answer. Or get to resolution. And that takes a unique board and it takes a unique community and it takes a unique set of individuals in terms of staff during those positions. Yes.
Not to touch on glass. Indeed, I would have our districts, I can be going to collaborate with each other and with the community and the students. Is something that I haven't seen in other districts that work for. And you got a very authentic way.
I'll also add that financial management of district resources were acclaimed for that work and major credit to our director Moore for his work, but we continue to perform very well in all of our audits. I think that's a huge, huge component of what we do with what did our site.
We had originally been split everybody up and do some breakout sessions, but we wanted to make sure that those in the room and on the screen have the opportunity to participate. So if you've been in with any strengths that you might see or identify, if it hasn't already been spoken. I'm going to move this over to weaknesses and then we can come back if you think of in your process to come up with weaknesses and if you have another. So areas of weakness, areas of.
Sometimes hard for me to frame weaknesses versus opportunities. But for weaknesses that are outside of our controls, because of Oregon's model of governance, there are major things outside of our control, like the level of funding we receive, mandates from the state, et cetera. And those, as we've seen over the last couple of years, can have a huge impact on how the community views us, our ability to educate students, et cetera, et cetera. So one of our weaknesses is we do have a lot of control, but we don't control all factors that impact public education. And I'm kind of cheating on that one because I had some of the other weaknesses, I'm thinking more of as opportunities for growth. Okay, interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, the way to think about weaknesses are similar to how we talked about the strengths is also internal. Right? So that could potentially be a threat or potentially an opportunity, depending on how you look at it. But what are, what are some of the weaknesses within the organization that you're concerned about? These are things that might keep you up at night, for example.
I think we could do a better job of getting better at it. We could do a better job with getting kids who don't want to go to college into good paying careers. We've taken the right steps in the right direction, but that's something we need to keep our eye on. And similarly, we need to keep our eye on the graduation rates of our kids in color, kids in Harvard. And to Director Zerchman's point, one of the challenges that we will work with intention again this year, resetting that dial is make sure that every teacher sees every child that's in front of them, not just some that they aren't struggling. And the data that we'll provide again tonight will demonstrate that we're making progress, but we continue to have persistent gaps. Both in terms of math content, literacy is our strength. Math is one of our weaknesses. And getting intentionally after those gaps and seeing every child.
You just didn't say the end weaknesses too.
I did.
I didn't identify that.
I cheated.
Other weaknesses? I'm trying out something around, and again, it's, I think we are figuring it out and getting better, but being able to communicate with all of our candidates. Specifically in a sort of language and cultural settings. And I think there are a lot of markers where we're not, we're not meeting those standards.
That's such a hard one because we have, we have worked so hard to say, Director Rose has worked so hard to communicate. And it's a little bit like the need of horse and water that you can't make in drinks to create. Like we can provide information in every way we can think of and there's still going to be five more that we haven't thought of. And then we'll get those and then there'll be five more. Kids come up with another Twitter, Instagram, something else that we hadn't thought of. So it's, it's one of those always having to work on.
I would say workforce diversity is a weakness. Again, making progress on, but workforce diversity, having a workforce that matches depth graphics of our students.
And retention of.
Yeah, and retention, I think.
That might be an opportunity for them, right? Just to tease that out a little bit, is it workforce diversity writ large across the whole district or are there particular areas of concern?
It doesn't have to be the data, but like I think for me, I'd like to see more student specialists in Florida. I'd like to see more counselors in the word backgrounds. I think those are all administrators in Florida.
Thank you.
I'd like with the board staff, the strengths, the weaknesses. Any other weaknesses though?
Yeah, I think kind of the school culture, running capitalism. So I know our staff, our schools are completely armed with young students and so that seems to have a little bit of a problem. So I would look back at the business in school and in other places.
Having Director Bernard speak reminded me. Having Director Bernard speak reminded me, it's different than just workforce diversity, but certain roles in our entire enterprise are hard to fill. And so in, as a consequence of that, we have understaffed departments that do critical work for the district. And it's been like that for a long time.
Okay, let's move over to opportunities or threats. There are some that have already been kind of voiced. So in terms of threats, certainly what's outside of your control, so on the education system. An opportunity that can appear was community support of ours. I mean, that is an external opportunity for sure. What else?
Are we doing both, opportunities and threats?
Yeah, I agree with.
I'd say another threat is the polarized and divisive environment of public education, politics, culture.
That was number one on my list.
You're right.
And this is.
Sure, yep, yep.
I think another threat we've got is our enrollment problems.
Oh, that's.
All enrollment. And then closely related to that is finances. What is the state going to do for funding this year? They have all this more money. That could be an opportunity, but there's also a threat of will they change the funding formula because there are fewer students? Will they do the same pie? How is that? And we still have furs being kicked down, the can being kicked down the road every couple of years. So furs will come back and bite us.
Can you say that again? Sorry, you just took a bite. Did you catch that?
Yeah, fur's liability, is that the concern? Right. How is that a threat in, sort of in your mind? How is that a threat sort of in your mind? Is it sort of, oh, an opportunity? Gotcha.
Although if we get another variant, it's certainly a threat.
Right.
Because we are getting more and more fatigue coming back and forth.
Right.
This is.
The last two years, that's all.
Right.
What else can't be controlled, that things are, we're here together.
Did we talk about like maybe budget cuts or S R going away, funding sources?
Yeah, S R is an opportunity, but it's also a threat down the road.
Yeah.
I think one of our opportunities is because of the, we have learned how to use technology so much better. And so what can we do moving forward with that technology?
Anything else? From Gavin. Okay, so why do we do a SWAT? This is going to help us be able to look at, narrow down what work we've already done, what's still relevant, and how we start to frame this work together. We don't want to lose sight of this information because we can turn them into objectives, we can turn them into goals, and really kind of allow us to be able to start to filter and focus. So this is really helpful. Thank you, especially for those who spent a little time kind of getting ready and prepared to think about how to respond to these four major areas. And we know we're about at that time where we're getting close to needing to transition. And so I'm hoping to be able to hopefully just teach you a bit of next steps and what to expect. There is a lot of engagement about ready to launch, and we want to make sure you know what is happening there.
Thank you. Fantastic. Okay. So in terms of next steps, we have been collaborating with this leadership team on this process, specifically Director Rose and Director Wren on some of the community engagement planning efforts. And we do have some tentative calendars outlined in terms of what that engagement looks like at this point. So we're moving forward with some community advisory committee work, some community listening session work, a survey that will be going out, and then these ongoing board workshops that we will continue to engage in throughout this strategic planning process. So our next effort that we will be kind of working through is this community advisory committee process and thinking about the structure of that community advisory committee, how this community advisory committee can support the strategic planning process moving forward and the makeup of those members, and really help advise the community engagement planning processes we move forward in. So we have a group of community members that touch on the various stakeholder groups that you have already kind of identified, that really act as strategic advisors throughout the system, or throughout this process. So as we head into some of our community listening sessions, into some of our smaller group listening sessions through those affinity and alliance group conversations, as we head into our survey process, and even our work together as a board, we have that community advisory committee to advise on this process. So I do want to pause there and take a moment to just recognize Director Rose, if you have any comments in regards to the ongoing community engagement planning that we have been kind of working on and where we're at with that.
Um, sorry, can you ask a question one more time?
By the way, I just really wanted to allow the opportunity for both of you, considering the collaboration that has happened on the community engagement plan in regards to next steps to the community advisory committee, the work that the two of you are leading, how recruiting and planning and thinking about how we tend to work with that.
Sure. I think right now, we have, through the infrastructure that we currently have related to our family pillar, student pillar, staff pillar, and so forth, we have folks that we are inviting. I think we're waiting on solidifying those dates. I know that we have updates. I think that we're going to talk about a little bit. And then the other part of that is we had just recently met with students in partnership for our student pillar. So we connected with TTSU presidents for our affinity and alliance group clubs and affinity groups. And we're partnering with them to host some of those listening sessions across our levels in our district. We are utilizing our feeder systems. So our, we're connecting with our affinity alliance groups through the feeder, through the middle school. So our Tuoliti feeder to Tigard, and follow feeder to Tigard, and Tuoliti to Tuolitan, and Hazelwood to Tuolitan. So we're working across those systems to create some of those spaces and opportunities. So I think those are the listening sessions. Do you want to share a little bit more about the broader process?
Director Ann and I will be working really closely together, but she's got a very wonderful system working with her equity team and has challenged all of them to identify some leaders within their groups that would be willing and able to serve on the advisory. I will also be sending out to all of you, board members, the grid that we're putting together based on stakeholder and how many folks that we're looking to recruit. I'm taking a look at not only working with Dr. Sue on who, from the cities, from both, from all four of our cities to participate. Some are city leaders and alumni, so those are the groups that I'm looking at, as well as we have a group of students from TTSU that you'll be hearing from here in a few weeks relative to climate change that have already volunteered and want to be a part of this process. And what was, there was one more thing. Relative to speaking with diverse voices. So we all have heard from a lot of folks over the last couple of years. So we're looking for also those folks that may not be completely aligned with the general thinking of this group, but that have engaged with us in a really meaningful way, and asking them to also serve at the table.
Thank you so much for providing that brief update of where we are at in this kind of co-development of a community engagement plan and really thinking through how we can engage all of the stakeholders of TTSC throughout this process. So what we're hoping to do is really launch a very comprehensive community engagement effort that's supportive of the strategic planning process. And at that time that we kind of build in our workshop time together and think about the refinement of the strategic plan, making sure that that is really coming together and that we're able to really meet at points that make sense for us to meet and invite that community advisory group to come in and help advise when it makes sense for them to come and advise. So working with both Director Rose and Director Ann, I'm thinking about that, again, that schedule and kind of timing of events of the next board workshop and when that makes sense, given some of the community engagement plans that we have moving forward. I do recognize where we're at with time, but we also wanted to take this opportunity to just draw upon any given, a brief update of where we're at with our community engagement, draw upon any opportunities or questions that you all may have as we move into this community engagement process. So if you think about us moving into spaces where we will be engaging with community members, if there is one question that is coming to mind as a cabinet or board member that you recognize is critical for us to include in our process, that we would love to hear that from you. So we're able to include that as we move forward. So I'll pause and allow if there's any feedback for them.
What do you want the community to tell you relative to the strategic planning process? It's a big question, and I think there's probably several questions within that. But that's really our hope in the community engagement is that we're getting that feedback we can thread through your plan.
So for me, I think the big question is, what are we missing? What do you need that you're not getting from the district, that the district is able to provide? This will be on first. If they tell me they need a new car, it's a suck. But, yeah, we think we're doing a pretty good job with education, but what's not there is what's.
And I would add that that's helpful for two reasons. Number one, knowing what's actually missing. And then also what, just sort of that helps us calibrate what people know or understand is actually happening because there may be some things that aren't being communicated to what is happening, but they're not seeing it, which is also a good thing to note. But just kind of helping us see sort of what the appearance is of what is really there.
Yep, exactly.
For me, I would say, I'm not sure how to frame this or say this, but if that, what do I want? I want them to feel ownership and like they're co-creating this with us and that, you know, this is something that they believe in in terms of a final product and on a broad level, a greater understanding and support for the district and what we do and how we do it. So I know that's bigger, but that's kind of how I think of the strategic planning process.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty good thinking there, Turboman, because we need to make sure that everybody understands that this is something that we're all co-creating and to see themselves in the, in the plan so that they can see their, their place in that, in that plan. If we're creating affinity groups and if we're creating listening sessions, then everybody should be a stakeholder in the plan.
Definitely.
If you think of anything afterwards, we still want to hear it. So. Can I ask one question around, I know that we'll get to this, but I would just want to make sure I know that everyone that's helping create all of this is going to be sensitive to this. But just making sure that these community engagement sessions happen at different times and in different places and spaces so that it feels accessible and safe to the people that are, are coming. I understand it's all over that, but I just, that could be the way that I want to make sure to be seen and felt by the people around us.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Okay. Well, as Lisa mentioned, we will absolutely remain open to any additional thoughts. As you kind of move forward and think this is something that I really want to be top of mind and thread our engagement process, please send that our way. So thank you all for sharing this space and time with us today to really launch off this strategic planning process together. We're very excited about our ongoing work throughout this continuing process together and the way in which we can engage and co-create this within this space and build in the broad, bring in the broader community. So thank you all.
Yeah, all right. So with that, I think what we'll do is we'll take a 10-minute break and then we'll reconvene for our regular, regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30. So that will go into.